Just a second, you're sorry. We ran a little over in our executive. Oriented, makes me nervous whenever it's quiet ahead of time. And for the record, my wife tested positive last week. I have been testing negative, but I am doing my due diligence to protect everyone around me. So we're in a mask tonight. But I needed to do that. But let the record reflect, we've reconvened with all members present. Councilmember Range was able to come in on the executive via Zoom, but has got conflicts and is unable to attend the regular meeting. For those who are able, I ask you to rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing after the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment to remember few longtime Madison residents we lost over the last few weeks. Lucy Santucci, lifelong Madison resident, died after a short illness on October 8th. She recently celebrated her 90th birthday with her friends and family. She survived by her son Paul and his wife Antonette, of Far Hills, three grandchildren and six great-grandchildren. She was predeceased by her husband Charles in 2006 and her four siblings. Born September 28, 1933, raised in Madison with her brothers and sisters. She was a graduate of Bailey Elder High School. She married Charles and they settled in Madison, lifelong and very active parishioner of St. Vincent Martyr. Also LaHunta Hurt, longtime Madison resident, died October 7th at the age of 91. Born in Plum Beach, South Carolina on June 1st, raised in South Carolina with a sister and two brothers. She married her husband Hayward and they settled in Madison in 1966, where they raised her two sons Wayne and Bruce. For those who knew LaHunta as I did, you always knew she was a kind-hearted woman, was always ready to lend a helping hand to those in need. She was, had a warm, giving nature, and she helped countless people throughout her life. She loved to volunteer in several charitable organizations, and she was also active in Madison politics, a member of the Madison Democratic Committee for many years. She survived by her two sons Bruce and Wayne, two brothers and four grandchildren. Joseph Kitchell, lifelong Madison resident, passed away on October 6th, aged 78. Survived by his wife of 30 years, Carol Anne, his children Kelly, Kristen, CJ and Christian, six grandchildren. Also survived by two brothers and sister, born Summit in 1945, raised in Madison with five siblings, proud graduate of Madison High School of 63, where he played football and wrestled. Served his country, United States Army in the Vietnam War, received Purple Heart, three Vietnam Service Medals. More recently, he was presented an honor by the County of Morris for his distinguished military service. After honorable discharge from the Army, he became an electrician, joined the IBEW in Parsippany, and spent most of his career with Norley Dean Electric Company in Chatham. He also was a longtime coach in Madison Junior Football Program. Longtime parishioner of St. Vincent Martyr also. And Joseph Strelig Jr., longtime Madison resident, passed away on October 1st, aged 88. Survived by his wife of 68 years, Loretta, three sons, Joseph Jr., Robert and Andrew, daughter Jacqueline, eight grandchildren, six great-grandchildren. Born in Morristown in 1934, raised in Booton. And he married his beloved wife Loretta in 1955, and they settled right here in Madison, her childhood home. He had a long career with perfume and fragrance industry, and he was involved, very involved with sporting activities with his children, including being a member of the Madison Huddle Club. Isabel Burrows, affectionately known as Izzy, lifelong Madison resident, died on September 28th, aged 67. Survived by her mother Lottie, her son George, her two sisters. Predeceased in death by her father, longtime community house director George Burrows. Isabel was born 1956, raised in Madison, was all-around athlete in each sport she played, Madison High School, softball, basketball and field hockey. I know that very well. She was a classmate of mine, class of '74. And she earned attention from colleges and attended Trenton State College on a basketball scholarship, but her knee gave out. She then served her country, the United States Army, as a drill sergeant. If you knew Isabel, you knew she was well fit for that job. She enjoyed helping others in community and volunteered at the First Baptist Church. Arlene Kennedy of Madison passed away in October, September 27th, aged 90. Born in Irvington on August 9th, 1932, raised in Maplewood, graduated Columbia High School, married her husband Lawrence Kennedy in 1957. In '63, they settled right here in Madison, raised her three children. She had a long career insurance agent with Ziegler Insurance Agency in Madison before retiring 25 years ago. She was also very active at St. Vincent Martyr Church. She is survived by two sons Kevin and John Kennedy, one daughter Karen Kennedy and four grandchildren. And Clara Rose Markovich, 97, longtime Madison resident, died on September 24th. Born in 1926 in Newark, grew up in Hillside, graduated from Hillside High School, married her husband Joseph Markovich, moved to Madison and they raised her two sons Douglas and Wayne. She was the secretary from Morris County Prosecutor's Office and St. Barnum's Medical Center before retiring with her husband to West Palm Beach. She was a fine artist, avid gardener and a quilter. She was predeceased by her husband Joseph and son Douglas, and survived by her son Wayne and his wife Dolores, and grandchildren, granddaughter and great-granddaughter. We also remember Haizua Otai, who died suddenly last week. Mr. Otai began his career when he enrolled in culinary school in Osaka, Japan, where he specialized in Japanese and French cuisine. Soon after, he moved to Kobe, where he strengthened his skills. In 1978, he moved to the States, where he worked at Abishana, Shinbushi and Tomoro in New York City. After New York City chapter of his life, he relocated in New Jersey, where he was a chef at Mount Fuji, Nara and Nagano, until he settled right down here in Madison in 2008 with the opening of Takuma. As told by his daughter Tiffany, Takuma was his dream. It was his very own restaurant, and he was so proud of it. As he got older, people asked him, when was he planning to retire? And he said, I never plan to retire because I love this, doing this so much. He generously, he genuinely was living out his dream, being a chef and making people happy with his food. She went on to say, we have been overwhelmed with, by how much love and support we've been receiving from the community. We never were able to comprehend how much my father was admired until now. He leaves two children Tiffany and Matthew and his wife Eileen, all part of the Takuma story. So let us take a moment to remember Lucy Santucci, LaHunta Hurt, Joseph Kitchell, Joseph Strelig, Isabel Burrows, Arlene Kennedy, Tyra Markovich and Gero Otai. And let us also remember those in Israel so brutally murdered by Hamas terrorists. Also remember the hostages being held as human shields, the families in Israel affected by this war, and all the families in the United States and across this world being touched by a war brought on by terrorists. Now let's take a moment of silence and reflection. Thank you. Can I have a motion, motion for the minutes of, executive minutes of September 27th?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of September 27th, 2023.
So moved.
Any corrections or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I haven't quite caught my breath, but some greetings, welcome all. Journalism class from Drew University, among our other guests and our Madison's finest. And going on the last couple of weeks, of course, for the second year in a row, the weather didn't cooperate for Bottle Hill Day, so we look forward to another successful day and reschedule October 21st. This past Sunday, I attended the Order of Multiannual Rosary for our Nation Procession. Procession went from St. Paul in the Walls to St. Thomas More in Commensation, and I want to thank our police department for making sure that everyone was safe for the walk. And for the Drew Forest Update, tomorrow night, I will be presenting to the Morris County Open Space Committee for the actual application. We had a meeting a couple Saturdays ago on some, what was called a virtual site visit, asking some questions, but this will be a presentation and a Q and A. The actual presentation is closed to the public because it will have contract deliberations, but I know that there will be many of our friends for the public portion of the meeting there, so looking forward to seeing people there. The Employee of the Month for October is Carmella Cook, Office Assistant of the Public Works Department. When the regular senior van driver was away on short notice, Carmella covered for him for several days, so there was no disruption in service for Madison seniors. And anniversaries for our borough employees, Chief Lyman Joel Phillips will be celebrating his 25th anniversary on October 19th, and DPW Lead Man Michael Giordano will be celebrating his 35th anniversary on October 25th. If we see them, please reach out and say congratulations for their long service. I'm going to do one proclamation from here and then come down for two more presentations. This is October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We have no one to accept this proclamation, but for those in the audience, if you know of someone that has either is breast cancer survivor or succumbed to breast cancer, please rise and accept this proclamation on behalf of all of us. And I will rise for my mother. And just a quick, about 50 years ago, my mother was diagnosed with breast cancer, and with the knowledge of those days, I'm sure that they did not catch it soon enough, and it did lead to cancer liver and her death long before she should have ever left this earth. And I am here because of her and I'm presenting this in her honor. Whereas the borough of Madison values the health of all of its citizens, and whereas nearly 300,000 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year, and one in eight women in America will be diagnosed with the disease in their lifetimes. Whereas breast cancer is the second most common cancer diagnosed in women, also ranked second as a cause of cancer and death in women. Whereas there are many health disparities among the underserved communities by income, geography, insurance, race, ethnicity, age and gender who are partially affected by this disease. And whereas certain factors put women at a higher risk than others, including age, personal or family history of breast cancer, specific genetic mutations and dense breast tissue. And whereas the routine mammogram screening and follow-up testing, breast cancer can be detected early, when it can be more effectively treated. And whereas there's, are more than 3.8 million breast cancer survivors in the United States, including women still being treated. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in recognition and support of the patients, families and professionals leading the fight against breast cancer, reaffirm our commitment to supporting breast cancer research and to educating all citizens about its risk factors, detection and treatment. Thank you. Got a drink of water, I'm going to come down there. And just a side note with this proclamation, one of the things I just heard recently, and some of you probably have heard also, that during the height of the pandemic, so many of us put aside routine visits to the doctor. And the prevalence of later-stage cancer being discovered has gone way up because it was caught later. So for those out watching this at home and all, if you have been putting down, putting off some of your routine visits, the time is now to get back into the routine, to live a long, healthy life. Let me have Patrolman Renato Capillas, please come forward, Sergeant James Caveza, Corporal Nelson Jimenez, Patrolman Jonathan Finicaro. Chief, come on. Derek and Justine, please come on up also. So tonight, we're recognizing these four officers for outstanding work, but in a way, we are recognizing all our officers, the ones that are off to the side today, the ones that are at work, the ones that serve our town every day. They're ready to answer the call, whatever that call might be. And I'm sure all of you would say right now is we were just doing our job. But you did an amazing job, and that's why we are here. What you did was react quickly and take heroic steps to apprehend criminals. Last Tuesday, the call came in, alarm at Gerlach's Jewelers, a multi-generation business in our downtown, in the Fielding family, for third generation at least. And the response was immediate, to the point that the perpetrators were still in the store. They tried to run, but they were not successful. So I want to ask Derek and Justine to share a little bit of your story, and then I'm going to present them.
I'm Justine Fielding. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone in the Madison Police Department for your speed and your efficiency. The store is our livelihood. It's been in my husband's family for three generations. For anyone that doesn't know, it opened in 1936 with Otto Gerlach and Winthrop Fielding, which was his grandfather. So we're passionate about it, but so much more than that. He grew up there. He has photos when he was a baby there. So waking up at 3:45 in the morning to our security cameras going off and seeing someone else in your store was so jarring, and it was just a very surreal experience, and it was so amazing to see you guys handle it perfectly. We are so, so grateful. We hope to continue this store for generations after us, and I'm sure with the help of you guys, we'll be able to do that. We just are in the best town ever, and we're really, really grateful. So thank you.
Thank you, Justine.
Getting my certificates ready, Chief, when I say...
Yeah, sure. Well, the next day, when I got, when I got notified on exactly what happened, actually early in the morning, I wasn't surprised how, how these officers responded. After, you know, working with them for such a long time and, and all our officers, they did, as the mayor said, exactly what they were trained to do. They handled it with class and professionalism. And, you know, just a side, side note to the story, when the individual was in the processing room at the end, and Corporal Aquino was, was with us and a couple other officers, pulled me aside, he said, chief, he said, and this is a career, you know, he was in and out of jail a long time, he goes, I have to tell you, he goes, this is the most professional way I was ever treated by a police department, ever. And, you know, Corporal Aquino can attest to that. And, you know, we talked and he, you know, told me a little bit about his life story, but I think out of everything, you know, the heroic action that they took, you know, we answer so many burglar alarms, you know, on a shift that, you know, and we respond the same way every time. And, you know, everything's on body camera, so when you look at it, you know, and they show up, and Sergeant Caveza was there, and the officer showed up, it was, you know, it was really, really professional and refreshing to watch. So I want to commend them and the entire department for their professionalism and their, and I want to thank the mayor and council and administration for, for your support also. Thank you.
So the certificates say, "For your exceptional and heroic efforts on October 5th, 2023, in ensuring that Madison continues to be a safe place to live, work and visit." And the nutshell says it all, and the comments we just heard really emphasize that, and the fact that we have such a great response team here, but also a police force that doesn't forget that it all starts with community, and that's what the important thing is. Corporal Nelson Jimenez. I'm putting this one back for just a second, because this one has a second date on there, because after you have these heroic efforts, you go home and you come back to work the next night. And then you might find yourself on those Madison streets with a car that looks very suspicious, and you look on the lights and probably everyone's room would do their right thing, pull over, both by speed off, you're not to pursue. And Patrolman Jonathan Finicaro came through the next night, pursued him to Chatham, and there's other jurisdictions, like after a short little race, another one was apprehended. And some of that was suspected of maybe committing some other illegal events at that. Thank you so much, so much, congratulations. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Good job. Good job. If Martin Heller, please come on up. We're going to have a little signing ceremony in just a second, and a presentation of a very big check. But I just want to say a few words, very few words about Martin, because if I say too much, he will probably walk out. I'm very hard, I'm a very modest man, but there's probably not a more caring person to help me, like, what he is on the list of time I had, or who's in the time of prayer. And so like I said, I'm going to be quiet about almost everything he's done, but there's something very special about this building right now. And this is preserving something that is nearing the earth in Madison. And at Sonic Lodge, which was a former home of Madison Presbyterian Church, the oldest church building, I still exist in our town, on Main Street, on Main Street. And it was unharmed, with the possibility of being sold for redevelopment. But with Martin's support, we're going to be able to preserve this beautiful building forever, in part of our street speed, and will be forever served in our community, as the senior said. It will be a deep description of, one, the preservation, and number two, the use. So we truly, a home for non-hospitals and other programs to support Madison, and also in particular, it is a home for a senior center program, at the main floor. This donation will be supported by counting the state grants that we already had in place over January, if we could not save through, those total about $600,000. So that way, to be able to save the building, put it to the use, but we'll be able to restore it. And the best part of the story is the building will be dedicated to Martin's son, which will be created in honor of Martin Heller, February 1st, 1960, to January 17th, 2023. His spirit lives on. There we go. I won't start over, though. This is working much better. As was written in Mark's obituary, "Mark lived life with great strength and fortitude, and was able to show character of generosity and giving, much like his parents. When Mark could no longer speak, he could write, but when he could not write, he listened and smiled." So that spirit will be alive, right there on Main Street, for generations to come. Thank you so much, Martin. I'd like to have Melissa Honeahan, the chair of the Open Space Committee, please come forward, because we also, to help expedite this, is, they approved tonight a $125,000 grant towards our purchase and renovation. And council members, come on up, including John, especially John Forte, who's been part of the HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, we know that, other council members, come on up around here for, that the, and it is a challenge to save old structures, and you need a hero, and tonight, we have a hero. Martin, you want to present that? There we go.
I want to tell you that you have to watch me, because I have a tendency to run to my creditors. I think it's a marvel for the town to have this asset preserved for perpetuity. I've got to credit the mayor, the council, Ray Cody, who negotiated with Mason and Mason Love, which wasn't easy, because the price you're getting is about a third of what they were asking. Give you the opportunity now to fix this building up, which needs it, but it's a beautiful building, a great asset to the town, and I'm proud to be part of funding of it, but you got to watch me now.
Yes, it'll be in good hands. There we go. And we'll do a little signing here. This building will never be demolished, it's upgraded. It is. Thank you, Martin. We couldn't have done it without you. And as Martin, as we get ready to sign the contract for this grant, it's a five-year grant, so the borough will get $200,000 a year for the next five years, for the full million. I do want to thank the Masons, because the sad story is, this property was worth more without this beautiful building. They have done a great job for 90 years, from when they took it over from the Presbyterian Church, preserving it, and they recognize their work couldn't go aside, and so they were willing to take less money to see this building stay and serve more generations, and also serve the community, as I already mentioned. So now, we will make it official. All right, we will now move on to reports from committees, community affairs. Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Downtown Development Commission and Director of Business Development, Battle Hill Day has been postponed and will now take place on Saturday, October 21st. Final preparation for the festival is underway. Fan applications are being accepted for the new date. If you want to participate, please contact Lisa Ellis at 973-245-3493, or ddc@rosenet.org. Please visit all the terrific vendors at the farmer's market on Thursdays at Dodge Field from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. The season continues through November 16th, and we'll feature music weekly. From the Chamber of Commerce, scarecrows decorated by the businesses will be displayed on Waverly Place from October 18th through November 1st. Halloween Parade and Magic Show is scheduled for Saturday, October 28th, on 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. Taste of Madison has been scheduled for Monday, March 4th, at the Madison Hotel. From the Madison Community Arts Center, the Chatham Senior Center will present monologues and plays written and performed by the seniors from the Center's Playwriting Workshop this coming Friday, October 13th, at 10:30 a.m. The Baroque Orchestra of New Jersey will perform a classical contemporary concert on Sunday, October 15th, at 4:00 p.m. New Jersey Photography Forum will present a month-long exhibition on the Roseum Walls. On the Rose Road again, features the travel photography of three of the forum's members. There will be a Red Cross Blood Drive on Saturday, October 15th, and Thursday, October 19th, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. Very Jerry Mastroielle in Moserlia will be hosting a drag bingo in a benefit for Mutual Morris on Friday, October 20th. The 7:00 p.m. show is sold out, but tickets are still available for the added 9:00 p.m. show. On Sunday, November 5th, the much-celebrated documentary film Joan Baez, "I Am a Noise" will be, "I Am a Noise" will be screened by the Film Society of Summit. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All the works on engineering, Ms. Arlick.
Thank you, Mayor. The Engineering Department has a report on a few works in progress. For the Library Interior Renovations Project, temporary trailers have been ordered for the public parking lot, and the library staff will be preparing for relocation. The first phase of renovations will be the targeted ceiling tile removals. At the MRC Multipurpose Courts, the final completion list includes electric LED lighting, some minor site drainage improvements, and gate adjustments, which are pending. But in the meantime, both basketball and pickleball users have been making good use of the new facility. For the Memorial Park Trails Project, amenities such as signs, benches, and kiosks are being installed, and final completion is anticipated in November. Public Works reminds us that if you live near a storm inlet or a catch basin in the roadway, please do not pile your leaves on the grates, leave some room for stormwater to get into the basin as we head into our seventh rainy weekend, probably a record. Another reminder, for residents who wish to request curbside pickup of air conditioners, refrigerators, and other large appliances, please contact Public Works at 973-593-3088 to make an appointment and submit payment of $25 for a curbside pickup. And finally, the See, Click, Fix app is a great way to contact the borough to report a concern. You can download the app to your phone, take a picture, and submit it for a speedy response. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And utilities, and if you have public safety, Eric, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. For the Electric Department, on September 27th, 28th, the Electric Department started pumping the water from the manholes on King's Road between Madison Avenue and Cross Street in preparation for pulling the fiber optic lines between substations. On September 28th, the Department performed streetlight repairs all over the town, courtesy of streetlight outage, the list provided by the Madison Police Department. On September 29th, due to inclement weather, the Department participated in confined space entry training from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. In the afternoon, the old lights in the substations were changed to LED, and work on the retro post lights on Main Street was performed. On October 2nd, the Electric Department finished pumping the manholes on King's Road. On October 3rd, the Department continued the streetlight repairs, completed a solar survey, and loaded the equipment for the fiber optic run on King's Road. The Department performed the fiber optic pull on King's Road in the late to early morning hours of October 3rd to the 5th, starting at 11:00 p.m. on the 3rd, and ending at 7:00 a.m. on the 4th, commencing again at 11:00 a.m. on the 4th, and ending at 7:00 a.m. on the 5th. The Department chose to complete the fiber optic run during off-hours since King's Road had to be closed from Madison Avenue to Cross Street. The Department would like to thank the Police Department for providing traffic control during the overnight hours. For the Water Department, on October 2nd, the Water Department assisted the Fire Department with the fire hydrant for the Niles Avenue kitchen fire. The Water Department also assisted the Gas Company, PSENG, when a high-pressure gas main was struck by an outside contractor on October 3rd. The Madison Water Department's annual fire hydrant and water main flushing program is in progress, and is estimated to last four more weeks. And as I've mentioned before, when hydrant flushing typically will not interrupt water service, residents may notice a temporary drop in water pressure while the crews are working in the area. There is also the possibility that the water may become temporarily discolored. This is normal. The discolored water does not pose a health hazard. If discolored water occurs, simply run the cold water for a few more minutes until it clears. Okay, this is from the Purchasing Department, but it's related to the Water Department. Earlier today, the borough had a bid opening to hire a company to install water meters and communication modules on all water meters in the borough. We anticipate awarding a contract in the coming weeks, with work starting in the next three months. This is an important step in automating the meter-reading function of the water utility. The new meters and communication modules will improve billing accuracy, make opening or closing an account easier, and will provide other benefits such as water leak detection. We hope to have the majority of the meters and modules installed by July 2024. Okay, from the Police Department. On October 10th, the personnel from the Madison Police Department, Bureau of Investigation, and the Morris County Prosecutor's Office attended the Madison Chamber of Commerce Business over breakfast at the White Horn Financial Building at 29 Main Street. The presentation consisted of tips and how to detect fraud, identity theft, and fraudulent currency. As a reminder, the Madison Police Department Traffic Safety Bureau wants to remind residents and parents that the high school should be utilized for overflow parking when the MRC lot is full. Do not park on the grass. The message board was deployed to remind voters of the same. Chief John Mishell would like to extend a big thank you to a group of residents who donated 30 Guardian Angel LED lights to our uniform patrol officers and traffic personnel. These multifunction LED devices help officers stay more visible when working outside of their vehicles, especially on traffic stops, accident investigations, traffic details, and posts, and many other types of calls where the lack of visibility could impact their safety. It also enables officers to work with a hands-free light source. These lights provide five-plus miles of visibility and multiple lighting options for our personnel. Okay, and finally, from the Fire Department. The Fire Department had the busiest month ever per call volume. For the month of September, the Fire Department responded to 25 general alarms, 35 still alarms, 36 investigations, and 58 medical calls, for a total of 154. On October 20th, an appliance fire was reported on 50th Niles Avenue. Upon arrival, it was found to be a kitchen fire. The fire went to a second alarm, was brought under control in 14 minutes. Although the fire was held to the kitchen, smoke and damage was done throughout the house. In the coming two months, the Fire Department, with some members of the Police Department, will be training with the New Jersey Transit, with New Jersey Transit, on railroad equipment that serves as Madison. This will be both classroom and hands-on. October is Fire Prevention Month. Don't forget to change your smoke and carbon monoxide detecting batteries. The Fire Department is also looking for volunteers. If interested in joining, please go to the madisonfd.com and click on Volunteers Needed banner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And health.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things going on around the borough with the Health Department. We continue to publish information for the community on our website and Instagram account. The topics this month included pain awareness, up to 70% of prescribed opioid drugs go unused, making proper drug disposal an essential component to pain management. There's a system called the TERRA Drug Deactivation System that's used, and the community's interested, they can look at our website. Another posting is Take Five to Save Lives, about suicide prevention, five steps to save lives. Last thing is You Will, free mental health and wellness support for New Jersey college students, another area of great concern. The Board of Health curated health education materials and resources available for distribution at the borough in our Public Health Office. We continue to have blood pressure clinics at the Madison Housing Authority, and blood pressure clinic at the Madison Health Department. On a nursing news, again, a blood pressure clinic was held at the Madison Housing Authority Rexford Tucker Center, and another one is going to be held at the end of October, I don't know the date, I'm sorry. And the Public Health Nurses attended Morris County Public Nursing Meeting in Morristown. On a environmental side, we're continuing with our anti-idling campaign around the borough. There's a digital message sign now, positioned on Rosedale as you approach heading north, the ballfields, just mentioning about turning off your cars when you're waiting, and about our commendation ticket program. The police officers are actively going around the borough to the school parking areas and our community recreation areas to just create more awareness about our idling campaign, and we're working on the model now for the commercial businesses. and we're working on the model now for the commercial businesses. Another piece of news that came in an email to all of us, the Council on Foreign Relations is giving an update tomorrow on the Israel Hamas war. Everybody's invited to attend this Zoom presentation tomorrow between 12:30 and 1:30. If anybody's interested, they are having on-the-record discussion on the escalating violence in Gaza and Israel, what it means for the Middle East, and what to expect in the coming days and weeks. If anybody's interested, and you can contact me, tomorrow I'll share this email and link for you to get on and participate or listen to the presentation. And thanks for saying something about that, Mayor, also. Yeah, definitely, I'm sure everybody can relate to what a catastrophe it is over there. That's all.
Thank you. And Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mayor. From Administration, in the beginning of the year, the borough switched health insurance providers from the New Jersey State Health Benefit Plan to the North Jersey Municipal Employee Benefits Fund. The state plan had increased by over 20%, and the new provider was increasing about half as much. Our health insurance plan pricing came in earlier in the week and is expected to go up approximately 5.5%. Other insurance costs are going up as well. The borough is a member of the Municipal Excess Liability Morris County Joint Insurance Fund. Our policy with the JIF covers workers' compensation, general liability, environmental liability, property, equipment, vehicles, employment practices, cyber insurance, as well as coverage for volunteers and the governing body. Our bill for 2023 was slightly over $1.1 million. That cost will go up approximately 10% next year. From the Finance Department, this Monday, the borough will make semi-annual debt payment of $1,682,112.50. These bonds were first issued in 2008, then refunding bonds were issued in 2014 so we could benefit from the lower interest rate. The projects funded by this debt include the new public safety complex, prior renovations to Borough Hall, and a new fire truck. We have five more years of payments on this debt. From the Tax Collector, the Tax Collector reports that the annual tax sale will be held December 7th. On that day, any property owners with unpaid 2022 balances on their taxes or utilities will have a lien placed on their property. There are currently 22 properties in danger of going on sale. Official tax sale notices are being mailed to those owners next week. Added and omitted tax bills are being mailed by Friday. These bills account for any increase in the value of a property that hasn't yet been billed, for example, increases due to an addition or new construction. The fourth quarter added amount is due on November 1st with a 10-day grace period and should be paid in addition to the bill you already received this summer. The Collector's Office can help with any questions regarding the bill itself, but anyone with questions about the value of the added assessment should call the Tax Assessor's Office. The Tax Collector's Office would also like to remind residents that the deadline to file this year's PTR or Senior Freeze Form is October 31st. Please give us a call or stop in if you have any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Lot of information tonight. Next to Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received an email dated October 4th from David Steckety of Fairwood regarding the traffic at Danforth Road in Morris Place.
Great, and now we're on to the first of two invitations for public comment. We actually will have the second one very, very shortly, but this one is limited to our agenda discussions, which are none today, or you may comment on resolutions. If you want to comment on anything else, you have right wait very shortly, and you'll be able to comment anything. These are the things you can comment on in this period. Resolution 266 is authorizing the execution of the Million Dollar Grant Agreement between the Borough of Madison and Martin Heller for the acquisition of the Masonic Lodge, and that's just what we just recognized a few minutes ago. Resolution 267, appointing John Downs position of probationary firefighter. Resolution 268 is authorizing extension of contract for tree trimming and tree removal services on our tree. Resolution 269 is authorizing extension of contract for onsite log and brush grinding services with Northeast Products. Resolution 270 is authorizing extension of contract for preventive maintenance and repair of sewer pump station equipment with rapid pump and meter services. That's through December of next year. Resolution 271 is authorizing renewal of shared service agreement with Senior Center of the Channons, provide social, recreational, educational, and wellness programs for Madison residents, and authorize funding for capital improvements. We are putting a one-time payment of $10,000 for capital improvements at the Senior Center, which our seniors are using quite regularly, and plus the annual renewal of the contract. Resolution 272 is authorizing renewal of agreement with Employing Systems Program with Atlantic Health System. Resolution 273 is updating Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Resolution 274 is approving temporary signs for family promise in Morris County. Resolution 275 is confirming the membership of Justin Hannah into Madison Hose Company number one as a volunteer firefighter. Resolution 276 is appointing our crossing guards for the 2023-2024 school year. Resolution 277 is appointing John Labbera for position of substitute crossing guard. If that name sounds familiar, or if I butchered it, he's a retired Madison police officer. Resolution 278 is authorizing Medical and Prescription Drug Plan under the North Jersey Health Insurance Fund for 2024. Resolution 279 is Amendment to Agreement to Resolve Differences Concerned Plan Unit Development. This sounds very complex, but this relates to the property along Park Avenue in Florham Park. We have an agreement in Florham Park as far as the development there, and there is a small piece of property that's being donated to Florham Park for further use, and also, most importantly, which will help both boroughs, is emergency access to Route 24 will happen there. Resolution 280 is requesting another insertion of item of revenue in the budget for 2023, and this is recognizing the grant that the Hartley Dodge trustees gave at the last meeting, so that's $4 million, so that's being adjusted. We'll see another adjustment in the budget at our next meeting for the million-dollar grant we just received tonight, so that's not bad, $5 million worth of adjustments on the revenue side in two meetings. So you can, you may comment on any of those resolutions. If you wish to comment on those, please step forward, state the resolution number, state your name and address, and the resolution you wish to address.
Hi, Claire Whitcomb, 12 Fairwood Road. I wanted to comment on the resolution about the Masonic Lodge, and I just really wanted to compliment the borough. Mr. Heller's a very modest man. He owns a Staples Mall, he's a major presence in Madison. But finding a solution to preserve that amazing historic building when the land value was much greater without the building is something that may not have happened in another town. We'd be staring down another housing development, and I feel like that this whole, the whole council, everybody here who works for the borough, has done huge amount of relationship building over the years, and the pride that everyone has in Madison, it takes a lot of behind-the-scenes caring, and, you know, it's not about dollars, it's about how we live in this town, and this is evidence of it, so thank you all.
Thank you, Claire. It's confirmation of what most of us know, we live in a very special place. Anyone else wishing to comment on any of the resolutions? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and as mentioned, we have no agenda discussions, and because we did not have a full two weeks in between meetings, we have no ordinance of hearing. So ordinances 49, 50, and 51 have a scheduled hearing for October 23rd. So now, we're on to invitation for public comment number two, and this is when you may comment on any topic, and if you already commented, you can still come up again. That's why I kept them separate. That's the way the agenda works.
Well, you knew it was either me or Judy, so it happens to be me. First of all, I wanted to...
State your name again.
Claire Whitcomb, 12 Fairwood Road. I'm Chair of the Environmental Commission and a member of Friends of the Drew Forests, and I wanted to follow up on what the Mayor said about the Open Space Trust Fund Committee meeting tomorrow. It's October 12th tomorrow, 6:00 to 6:30 PM. It's a half hour. We packed it last time, we had 40 people, we all went out for pizza. We are not planning such a big event, but we expect to have a broad range of people coming from towns across Morris County, and we expect to have Drew students, and if you care about saving the forest, the town has arranged, put in a request for $10 million in funding from the county, and this is the night that they vote. And the Mayor will be at the closed door part of it, will be at the public part of it. So please, anybody listening, you're welcome to join us. I just learned this today, that a third of the carbon in the atmosphere has now come not from fossil fuels, but from plants that we have removed from the planet, mostly our forests. So this is, you know, these sort of sobering facts are why we're trying to save a 53-acre forest in Madison. So I'm actually here to report on the yard sale, the townwide yard sale. Friends of the Drew Forests had a sale, it happened to be in my driveway. It was pay what you want, you know, no prices, just make a donation to the forest. This throws people off because, you know, they want to know, like, what is this worth? Well, you know, what's a forest worth? So the thing is, it was great. People really gave generously. One of my neighbors brought by, I don't know, 25 puzzles, you know, that like everybody likes during COVID, and people would give us $20 for two puzzles. I mean, and I didn't expect this to happen, but basically, it turned into a focus group because we had done a yard sale in April of '22, and this time around, and we had to explain everything. We had to say where the forest was, we had to like talk to people. This time around, people walked in and said, oh yeah, I know all about it, you're doing great work, thank you. So it was, it was really great, and so we have gotten the word out. A few people are angry about the postcard that Drew sent. Most said, thank you for what you're doing, and, you know, just like a deep thank you. It was very rewarding. The husband of Sandra Levine, she's the Great Swamp Watershead Water Expert, gave us $10 for two bottles of ink from my childhood that I hope weren't dried up. Rachel Urwick's grandfather's chair is sold to a cigar-spoken Hispanic man who had the exact same curves. Mary Jane... His body fit in the chair with the same curves.
Clarified, yes.
Mary Jane's lobster pop went to Mayor Conley's neighbor, and the mayor himself showed up. I think that his wife sent him to buy puzzles, but he walked up. Mary Jane had a lot of artwork, and there was a huge framed poster of Madison, and like it was, the chemistry was just instant. So we gave him the poster, and I hope it's finding a good home in your office.
And one minute.
Okay, well, that's it, basically. It's just interesting when you're out in the town and you really have a purpose besides selling old china and things of that nature, and it's much easier to let it go when it's a cause you really care about. So, thank you all.
Thank you for all the work, and thank you for hosting, and the poster is not in the office yet, but it will be soon, and it's a classic one. It includes places such as Premier Video, which was the video store in Madison before Blockbuster, includes Park Tavern, which goes way back, so it is a bit of history, so thank you. And it was also great to get the intel on my neighbor. I'm still waiting for the Lobster Fest invite, but I know he can do it now. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward.
Hello, my name's Rodie Calamaris. I go to Drew University, so I'm not a native here. But I was just wondering, I'm in for the journalism class at Drew. I was just wondering about the, like, the Fire Department, because they bought a new, or they're going to buy a new fire truck, and they had the most like 154 alarms, like, or 54 incidents occur. Was there any reason why September was so, like, had that many incidents and stuff like that?
We avoid back and forth, so if you want to ask your questions, and then we'll answer them all when you get done. So was there a reason for the high number of incidents in September? Any other questions?
That, and, I mean, did you need to buy the fire truck to, like, to compensate for all the alarms? Are there going to be, or is it like a reason, is it like continuous issue, or is it just September just happened to be very busy? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob, can you...
I did some questions. Medical calls...
Sorry, I'm getting like my buddy over there with the speaker. The medical calls, the 58, that's actually low. I mean, in a town like this, you'd maybe get 100 a month. The investigations and still alarms, that's pretty, that's pretty average. I mean, you know, somebody's cooking and they set off a fire alarm, so that happens. I mean, it's a small town, but there are 16,000 people here, so you figure that's not too bad. And then the 25 general alarms, I had one where I live today, like, the fire alarm goes off because, you know, the smoke got, hit a fire alarm, and it went off, but there was no major fire, so these are actually pretty, pretty good numbers. It's not excessive.
So it wasn't, why, did they say that it was a lot, like, a lot of, like, total number of calls, or?
No, it just said the total, it seems like a lot...
Oh, okay.
Compared to other months, and also, it has partially to do with everybody coming back to town. Don't forget, we just came off the summer, and around here in the summer, the town empties out.
Oh, okay.
So now we're back to real life, I always called it, when I was on the ambulance.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And the fire truck purchase was to replace prior ones. In fact, some recent purchases were able to combine vehicles as it can do more things. Some more background for your journalism class, that typically, a town of the size of Madison would rely on a volunteer, 100% volunteer Fire Department. We actually have a paid Fire Department. As noted, we will be backfilling a vacancy tonight to make sure we keep that Fire Department at its strength and also rely on volunteers. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward.
Hello, my name is Delilah Ben. I'm also a Drew student from the Journalism Class, aka English 244, and I actually don't have any questions. I kind of just wanted to like introduce myself slash kind of get on my comfort zone to stand up here today. I've personally never been to a council meeting before in my life. I'm also from Tom's River, New Jersey, so if you guys know, it's a pretty big town. You would never get an email sent to like anyone about like, hey, there's a council meeting happening, because like everyone kind of just does their own thing. But anyways, being here today, though, has definitely been very, very interesting, and if it wasn't for my professor, I wouldn't have realized that how much I would actually love to come back here again in the near future because of how exciting this is to me. So, yeah, just wanted to say that.
Very much, and that's part of what a public comment period is, just to say, share your thoughts, and you did pick a great night to show up today, as we recognize the police officers, and obviously accepted a million-dollar grant, but I will tell you, that doesn't happen at every meeting. And I will also tell you that I think as for journalism students, it might be worthwhile checking out some of the other neighboring towns, because I don't think anyone does it as well as Madison does, but, and no one has a room like this either, so that's for sure. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We now move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the Clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for first reading will have a hearing date set for November 13, 2023, all be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title, Ordinance 52-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison Appropriating $85,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of 25 LED Victorian lamppost heads and accessories.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 52-2023.
Second. Council discussion?
Council discussion. This is part of the capital budget, this is restocking, and again, for the Drew, another reinforcement of a special town your university is in, we own our own electric company, so we maintain all the streetlights and all the power to all the homes in, in the town and, and the university. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Urlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-three dash two thousand twenty-three.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating a hundred thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase windows, doors, and related improvements for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance fifty-three dash two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Council discussion. Another one part of the capital budget. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Urlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-four dash two thousand twenty-three.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison authorizing the acquisition of real property located at one seventy Main Street Madison and identified as block two thousand one, lot seventeen, for public purposes.
Mayor, I move ordinance fifty-four dash two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
And council discussion. And this is the, yes.
I was just going to point out, if you weren't, that this is, in fact, the Masonic Lodge, so it's exciting that the wheels are turning after an extended period of behind-the-scenes work to save this building. It's really exciting to have it come to this point where we're ready to, to save the building in earnest and perpetuity, so I want to thank the administration for working diligently, frankly, for years to, to make this happen, so thank you.
Mayor, the goal of repurposing the building is to serve the community, potentially to serve the seniors and hopefully some other agencies that can utilize that nice space once you renovate it.
Yep. So as mentioned before, it will be restricted to borough use or nonprofit use, so we could be doing, the senior program is on the first floor, there's a second floor that after renovations are done, could be used by a nonprofit or expanded services. There's great flexibility, and, you know, will be part of our streetscape and serving our community for generations. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Urlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Haralyn Pudus?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Can we move on to consent agenda resolutions? Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move resolutions R two sixty-six dash two thousand twenty-three through R two eighty dash two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Any that need to be pulled for discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Urlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Haralyn Pudus?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. I want to approve the vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
From the current fund, two hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars twenty-two cents. From the General Capital Fund, fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars forty-one cents. From the Electric Operating Fund, forty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars twenty cents. From the Water Operating Fund, eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars eighty-two cents, and from the trust, forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents. The total is three hundred and seventy-five, three hundred and seventy-four thousand sixty-five dollars thirty-five cents.
Mayor, I move payment to the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Urlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Haralyn Pudus?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
There is no new business. Mr. Forte?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, great meeting, and we'll see you in a week and a half as we get back onto our Monday schedule.